Good evening and welcome. Shashin Valley Regional Vocational Technical School District Meeting, School Committee, June 21st, 2022. In attendance tonight, Mr. Kaffett, Ms. Nancy Asbedian, Attorney Brian O'Donnell, Michelle Valaloni, Ms. Tara Gillis, Attorney Pat Muse, Superintendent Brad Jackson, Dr. Jackson, and incoming Superintendent, Mr. Tony McIntosh. And Karen Feola, we are the recording secretary. At this time, I would like everybody to please rise. Dr. Jackson, would you lead us? I pledge allegiance to your last meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please stay, excuse me, please stay standing. My fault. I just want to take a moment. Just to think about the moment of reflection here, a moment of silence, tragic event, Captain here to a staff member, in the memory of Raymond O. Just keeping your thoughts and his family, family and your thoughts. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so. Okay, public comments. We had somebody signed up, things since canceled. And one of the people here, signed up show, I don't see anybody. So we're going to move on. And next item here is the the correspondence. Correspondence. We have a letter, it was a letter sent to Dr. Jackson from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. If everybody get a chance to look at that, it was in our packets. It was talking about recently, a recently conducted tier-one focused monitoring review in the school. And if we're just talking about the correspondence letter. Any comments anybody want to make about that? Pretty cut and dry. Brad, you anything you need to explain?
Just very quickly, the one thing that they seem to be focusing on related to the continuous improvement in monitoring plan, any quick comment or explanation, whether that was a surprise or expected or?
That was, so they, they did, they did in their review of IEPs, they did want to ensure that staff received annual training to ensure that students are made, that placements are made in the least restrictive environment. That is, kind of runs parallel to our work to provide more inclusion and co-teaching. So we don't have essentially some separate math and ELA classes. The network is ongoing and they just, basically, they just wanted to kind of encourage that work to continue. They recognize, which is why we've got a partial implementation and partially implemented as opposed to not implemented, which we would have gotten if we hadn't started the co-teaching and the transition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So anybody else we all said on that?
I was just gonna say, I assume that Albert had a lot to do with this.
Yes.
So I would like to thank.
Okay, so this.
Usually in correspondence we do.
Do they come, did they, Brad, do they, how often do they come in?
So this is done every four, every three to five years, depending on need. We all, this is actually the second one that they did this year. We've had three onsite examinations, shall we say. This year was our five-year NEAS mid-cycle review, which was done over the course of the week in the month, early May. This was done in December. And then in January, we also had another coordinated, TFM-coordinated program review on our ELL program, which had no findings at all. So in the middle of COVID, we really had quite a few onsite compliance reviews. The department apparently never got the memo that there's COVID going around, so they kept that going. My good friends at Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
So thank you, Jeff Albert, Dr. Jackson.
My ELL was headed up by Dan Johnston, her review. And then Jess Cook obviously headed up the five-year NEAS mid-cycle review. We have not got a written report from that yet. That should be due, that will be sent to McIntosh probably this summer or early fall.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Continuing on correspondence, we received a bill from Attorney Greenstein. Is there a motion to?
Move.
To move.
Pay Attorney Greenstein $3,327.50.
Motion made by, second by Mrs. Gillis. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Obstentions unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion for the Nuttall McAvoy and Joyce bill for $129.
Second.
Second by Kent. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Obstentions? None. Unanimous. Thank you, folks. Bills are passed. The next thing on the list, agenda item, is the approval of the minutes of May 24th, 2022.
Some of them.
And any questions, comments? Then moved by Mrs. Muse. Second, second by Mrs. Gillis. Discussions? Minutes pretty clean. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Obstentions? None. Minutes unanimous. Okay, Dr. Jackson.
Yes, I want to give you my final report to you all as Shashin Superintendent. I will be brief, although I did want to highlight some things. I am very pleased to make my final COVID update to the committee. We did, we did maintain low numbers throughout the month of June, thanks in part to good ventilation and open windows and probably lousy reporting on the part of the bunch, particularly on the part of students. But those are the numbers that were reported to us and which we reported to Jess.
I would assume the May spike is after April vacation?
The May spike was coincided with April vacation and that little, there was a statewide spike as well. That took, that mirrored that. Exactly. And I can't believe we actually had a week back in January where we had 102 cases. When you're in the middle of it, you don't realize it, but we had 102 cases followed by 97 the next week. 200 cases in two weeks. It is pretty ugly. Some good news, we have a number of students down at Skills USA in Atlanta. This, the darker picture is our students lining up with their chaperones, or some of them, at the airport. And the student on the right is Tyler Leeds, who's a student from Tewksbury, who is, this was taken about an hour ago in a conference room at the center where he was practicing in advance of his test tomorrow. So these students are very, take this Skills USA competition extremely seriously. This is a blood sport in vocational technical education, and we want to bring back some national length. So we are, we have 11 students down there. Wanted to thank, wanted to thank Mr. Bagney, who at the last minute substituted for a teacher who had signed up to go as a chaperone. So thank you to Joe for doing that. Wanted to give you all a brief update on the hiring. The, we hired, we have hired the SPED slash ELL teacher. I wanted to give you all kind of a heads up about the fact that for the first time this fall, we will have students who require one-on-one ELL instruction. ELL stands for English Language Learner. It is, it is required of students who have become scores on their English proficiency exams at a certain level. We have one student who will require 90 minutes, one-on-one, per day from a certified ELL teacher. And two students who will require one period per day. Doesn't have to be one-on-one, though. Those two students we can schedule together. And that, that position, so we made that a heavy ELL position this year. And we're very lucky to find a dual-certified SPED ELL teacher at a and we, so that is a trend, I think. I want to just kind of lead the committee with a quick thought around that. That, I think that that is a sign that our attempts to make Shashin more accessible through our changes to our, to our admissions policy and taking away the CUT score, I think, I am 100% convinced that those two things are connected. That eliminating the CUT score, based on which community these students are coming from, where the CUT score was, it did impact the students we, we accepted. I think that the elimination of the CUT score and these four students attending Shashin next year are directly 100% correlated and related. So this, I think this shows two things. One, that our admissions policy did, did make it harder for students who were not, whose English proficiency was low, did make it hard for them to be admitted here. And the other piece is that we will probably likely be seeing budget requests in FY '24 and perhaps beyond for some, we're gonna have to, Shashin's gonna have to make an investment in ELL services beyond this kind of stock gap, half ELL, half SPED teacher. Because basically, that half ELL, half SPED teacher with those, just those three kids that I mentioned is the half ELL piece of her day is essentially 100% spent.
So I was gonna say, in the budget, it comes under spent, then?
Well, no, we haven't, well, this year, we, one of the retirees, who was actually, her salary was under spent, but she was a certified SPED teacher and a certified ELL teacher. When we, we made a purposeful decision to post that as a, as a dual-certified position, so the salary is actually going to be underspent. But I think that I, my estimate, guess, prediction, experience-based thinking is that you will, Shashin will be seeing more ELL students come in the coming years to the point where you will probably have to have, hire a dedicated, at least one dedicated ELL teacher.
So it would be a new line item under spent?
Well, it would be a new line item, you know, it's a student service of sort, yeah. But it's, but ELL services and special education are distinctly different. They don't, they don't, you qualify for them completely differently.
And ELL is not an IEP, it's just needs some assistance with their English. It's not necessarily an IEP.
So one of our students has a fluency of less than 150 words of English.
So it perfectly doesn't need the IEP, just needs the help of being.
Doesn't need the IEP, just doesn't speak English. And that is going to be a very new thing, you know. One of the things, you know, we talked about, Tony was involved in a conference call with Danica Jess, me and Tony talked about this. You know, we're gonna have to do some training of the freshman teacher, shop teachers, so to make sure they can, we can, those students can access the shops safely during their, their week if they're within the shop. So it's gonna be tricky. And it's, but that is, that, we, we will do it, because that's the law.
This may be a foolish question, but I just have to ask, is there a goal to teach the students how to be fluent in English?
Absolutely. Yes. Yes. You cannot take MCAS in any other language language. All right, we do have, we did, Larry retired, so we had a Masonry teacher. That position has been filled. Larry was out, was on sick leave all year. And so we had someone temporarily fill that position as a, we hired that person full-time. Food Service Director position has been posted. And interviews are going to be held after we make the transition from business positions. I'm interviewing the Engineering Teacher tomorrow morning at 7:30. So that position, we have a Dave Norwood, and Jess Cook brought one forward. That was the physician that was added in FY '23 budget. That will be filled tomorrow. There is a SPED position through another, another 100% SPED teacher. That Jeff Albert is, is doing interviews. He said he had one scheduled next week. So that one will, will certainly spill over into the next fiscal year. The Assistant Principal for Student Affairs and the Director of Guidance. There are two finalists for each position. And Tony is interviewing both, all four, some tomorrow, I think, and two the next day. And that will be filled, hopefully, from those finalists before, before the end of the week. So, or soon thereafter. So.
Just a couple of questions.
So that's the update on the FY, the hiring for the fall.
What's the deal with the, the other Assistant Principal? That's still in the budget? What's going on with that?
That position hasn't been posted because we haven't signed the contract with the Business Manager. That will be posted tomorrow.
And as the plan for the Director of Guidance, like, I guess that's a question for Tony, would be basically in January to reassess to make sure that we have enough staff in that department?
Yep. Yeah, next budget cycle.
Okay.
So I wanted to just kind of take us all back a few years. This committee, I was looking at the minutes of the meeting that, where I was hired back in April 28th, 2020. And since then, seven, so of the 10 people that hired me, one voted against me, one abstained. She didn't vote against me. Of those 10 people, oh, no, hold a grudge right there. Of those 10 people, seven are no longer listed. Nancy, Ron, and Pat are the only, so my point is that this team here, this, this new team, me and, and the, and the school committee have, has, in the middle of COVID, has had quite a few successes. Shashin has provided more in-person instruction during the COVID pandemic than any of our, any school in the Merrimack Valley, as far as I can figure. But at least of the five schools that we're sending districts. We've begun our transition to a co-teaching model. We've done, and I think this committee, one of its proudest accomplishments should be the adjustments to the admissions policy and to align it to DESI regulations. We have brought in a significant, we, this committee has made a significant increase in mental health supports. I want to stop for a moment about the concept of mental health supports. This, we, last week, as you know, we dealt with an extraordinary traumatic and tragic and surprising loss of a staff member and really had to adjust very, very quickly. And we brought in some, some support from other communities. And on that day, on the Monday, at the rate past, two of those counselors brought, brought dogs with them, therapy dogs with them. And we also have, one of our school adjustment counselors has their own therapy dog that has just been certified this year, got all their papers. And she brought her dog in, his name is George, brought her dog in on Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And those animals were amazing. And they supported students. But the thing that I found extraordinary is on, on Monday, Monday was a very difficult day for our staff. Our staff wasn't, our students weren't prepared for this, but our staff wasn't prepared for this. And there was a group, I'm not gonna say what group they were, but there was a group of teachers who would probably be embarrassed to, for me to say, that they were basically stunned and they were just standing in the hallway. They had been there for like an hour during the day. Their, all their doors were open, the kids were supervised, we knew all that. But these guys, these people just needed to stick together. They weren't really talking much. They were just kind of being together and kind of thinking. You could, you could hear them thinking. And that, and one of the, one of the counselors from outside the district who had a dog came around the corner with their dog. And all of a sudden, those people became children. Oh, come here, puppy, come here, puppy. And they melted and they opened up to that dog. And they, it was the most, I wish you could have seen it, because I've never seen something that shows more clearly the value of therapy dogs. And I am very pleased that a school, that one of our school adjustment counselors has a therapy dog. And it's my recommendation to Tony that he begin the conversation with this committee about a policy that permits that teacher to bring their dog, their therapy dog into school. Because I wish, I just wish you could have seen it. It was nothing short of miraculous. And it gets me off the tongue just talking about it. Another, another transition that we have done, we've transitioned this district thanks to thoughtful investment and federal supports, the COVID money supports. We transitioned this district at no cost of the taxpayer to a one-to-one techno, to a one-to-one student technology. And our teachers embraced it. We signed a memorandum, the new memorandum of understanding with the Bill of Police Department that clarifies and explains the roles and responsibilities of our school resource officer. That was a long time coming because the state legislature changed the law and there had to be a commission at the state level to put out a new statewide MOU that would have been, and then we gave the new chief and the RICA, so kind of took a little longer. But that's all signed. And we did have a lot of external oversight at the same time, as I talked about at the beginning. We had a highly successful ELL coordinated program review and a SPED coordinated program review and a very successful five-year onsite NEAS visit. I'm very proud of the, the, the change in relationship that I was able to bring forward with the STA. I came, when I came here, there were a lot of grievances on my desk that were ready to go and cost them all a lot of money. And all of those were resolved. And we were able, the STA and I were, were able to collaboratively resolve every concern they had since. We, I think, perhaps the biggest, the most powerful legacy of this committee in its current configuration is that we began the conversation about whether this building was going, will be meeting the needs of Shashin students over the next decade. We've realigned our administrative structure and this committee's, we've supported with Assistant Principal for Student Affairs, all in spite of the fact that this committee had seven out of 10 members who joined after my hire, unfortunately. And also, finally, we led this community through two extremely difficult and very different heartbreaking losses of staff members. So I just want to, I think it's important for this committee to kind of pause at the end of the school year and reflect on the accomplishments, why you come here, why you listen to those, take those phone calls and take those emails and hopefully filter out the ones that don't focus on things like this, because this is an important and, in my opinion, impressive list of accomplishments that this committee has accomplished along with the staff here at Shashin. So that's the conclusion of my report to you tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Before I forget, Nancy, you reached out to me on the SRO. Did you have any comments?
I'd like to know exactly what's involved. I don't think this is time.
Okay.
You can do it at the retreat.
Okay.
Why don't I send the committee a copy of the MOU?
Yeah.
And that's, that's a good, that really outlines.
I really don't understand exactly what the responsibilities are.
I, I'll send everybody a copy of the MOU and the standard operating procedures. That, which are pretty, which are standard statewide. And that, I think, will answer a lot of questions about regarding the school resource officer.
So I, we appreciate that and we can discuss that further if you choose to. Yeah, just thanks, Nancy. Tara.
I just wanted to say, Brad, thank you. I've only been a school committee member with you, and I have enjoyed it. It's been very educational. And we do have a small selection of pastries in your honor. Oh, thank you. And please eat them, because I can't eat them all. And Brad's wife will not be happy with me if I send them all with her.
You know, she doesn't, she doesn't always look inside my car. There is that.
Brad, any comments?
But I've been doing this for so long that I know she's not going watching right now.
We good? General, any comments?
No, I just wanted to thank you, Brad. You really, you know, helped me, you know, guided, guided me as a new committee member in understanding what our role is, you know, generally. And I've really enjoyed and appreciate all the hard work that you put into your job. And the students appreciate it and the family, so thank you.
Thank you. Right? Thanks for everything in general and specifically for some of the outreach to Bedford and cooperatively to you and to Tony for the degree of collaboration in this transition. I think it's been an excellent example.
Nancy, any comments?
Hi.
We'll keep it short, sweet. Kent?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, we've agreed for all time, but I definitely appreciate your opinion and candor. So I wish you the best of luck in your retirement.
Thank you.
It's been a good year.
And Gwen, who just got to know you, is now gonna say goodbye. So I, do you have any, anything on your mind? Thank you.
Saying sentiments, everyone.
That's great. For me, and I said to Brad, I just got to know you when you're walking out the door. It's like the substitute teacher.
When you hired me, you knew it was gonna be.
Well, I knew that, I knew that, I knew that. You're like the substitute teacher who took over, now the regular teacher's coming back. But, you know, it's been a great relationship, Brad. Thank you for just guiding us through the most toughest times in educational history with COVID and everything. So my, my compliments, a former teacher, my compliments to all the, thank you for all the great work you've done. And I think you've kept us, like you said to me, you made this person a little better. You left it a little better than if you found it. So thank you so much, sir. So moving on, ladies and gentlemen, our subcommittee reports we have tonight. Kent Moffett, the chairman of the subcommittee.
No longer.
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, let me restate that. This is the last time Kent will make a.
I think that report's going to come under executive session.
But you just, okay, because he wanted, we wanted to say that we met and. So what's happening with the subcommittee is that Kent and Charlie talked and I was going to discuss it later on, but I'll tell you right now. Charlie's going to take over the chairperson. Is that right? Chairmanship, that was the word I was looking for. So Kent, he had his last meeting as chair. So the next time the budget subcommittee meets, Charlie will be chairing that, so. Well, we'll be talking about that during executive session. Okay, great. Okay, so we'll hold that for later on. And the old business, Karen Fiola reminded me, she sent out an email to everybody if you are interested in attending the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Conference. It is down in Hyannis, November 2 to 5. Taryn is our elected delegate. Patty, Patty is the alternate. I know Taryn is going, I don't know about Patty, but anyway, if anybody wants to go, Karen needs to know like yesterday. Okay. So Karen is very, we know Karen's very efficient. We want to book, we want to get all the reservations in. And. She needs to, yeah, thank you. What's the book for 2:30 at the early bird? So if anybody's interested in going down there, it's, if you have the time and you check it on Wednesday, there are meetings Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then Saturday's only for the delegates voting.
You can say, listen, but you don't have to.
Yeah.
What is the training? Is it a training or is it?
It's a conference where they have, you just, Gwen, I'll send you.
There are conversations, meetings all day long.
Does this replace charting the course?
No.
No. It's in addition. And it's just, they'll have different meetings about different topics. And some are more just educational, you're just learning. Others are more conversational. There's three or four a day, a bunch of meals. We ended up only doing the midday meals and then the evening we just went out as a group. And there was definitely some that were more vocational focused. So we definitely attended those, but we also talked among ourselves. It was me, Nancy, Ron and Patty who went personal last year. So sometimes we divide and conquer. There were two that was interesting. We intentionally split up so that we could come back and report to each other.
They have a keynote speaker, can I say, yeah, I can say. Keynote speaker on Thursday and Friday. Very interesting stuff. And then they break up sessions. And so it's from, obviously people can follow the state. What I found interesting last year when we were down there is that there is a, the state's divided into districts. Is that right? Yeah, we're District Eight, am I saying this correctly? Yeah, so all the vocational schools, Gwen, for your information, the whole state is divided into districts. All the vocational schools fall in District Eight. So we had, there was a meeting we attended of all the vocational schools. And that was, we felt pretty proud because we were one of the few schools that had an admissions policy in place. And they looked at us like, you kid me, Nancy knows that. So that's coming up, folks. If you can, you know, make available your work schedule or whatever not, let Karen know very, very, very soon. Way down the road, I attended that last year and I went to the national one. Way down the road is the, and Karen will have information about this in the fall, is the National Association of School Boards. And that next year is going to be in April of '23. I'm just throwing it out there. And that's going to be in Orlando next year. And that's a weekend, that's, you come in on, I went to San Diego this year, come in on a Friday and it goes Saturday, Sunday, Monday. So if any time down the road, folks, you could make yourself available for that. It's an incredible experience, Taryn.
Oh, I guess there's a counter question for Karen. Last year at MASC, there was talk about a vocational specific conference. Do you guys remember what the group was?
I can't remember this.
We went to Texas.
ACT, ACTE.
So. Yeah, if you could find out, it's in Vegas in December, that might not work, but.
You all have to, you have to be ACT, ACTE member, so you would have, I would have to join the. Ron, you must remember, this was historically the, the vocation. In the past, the previous super credits would always send vocational teachers.
Oh, okay.
Now, yes, yes, yes.
But it was very interesting.
Is that not happening anymore?
No, it is. But it's, but that's the, that's the only vocational conference I know of, ACTE.
So more, Tony, that's mostly for vocational administrators and all, just staff?
It's, 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 it's staff members can go, there's staff teachers, there's staff administration. I don't know those school committees, I've never really looked into that.
A few years ago, I had to register.
Yeah, we all went and, well, Munchausen. It was very interesting.
But I don't know that it's been geared towards school committee, I think.
Thank you. Thanks, Taryn.
It's in Vegas in December?
Thank you for saying that because I knew you, you kept saying, I'm telling you, what is she talking about? That's what they're talking about. Okay, so those things are on the horizon one sooner than later. Subcommittees are out there, we only change one chair. And as the, as Tony takes over and the subcommittees are, need to meet, chairs will reach out and we'll, and we'll find appropriate meeting dates in the fall. I'm thinking, Tony, we talked about creating that new committee where the management, the management thing, so I think that's a great idea because I think things that need to be addressed when you put together your organizational plan. So that is where we're at on that. And the new business, I put this in here.
I do an old business thing.
Yes, ma'am.
What happened with swimming? Find out if that's.
I'm sorry, Pat, I will get that.
You know, I did ask somebody about that and they, they, did they ask if the kids in?
You didn't come back in the fall. That's what I was going to say.
Does it, does it swim this year or something?
Okay.
Did they not swim?
They didn't swim this.
They didn't swim this year because a parent professional, there was a switch in parent.
Okay.
Professionals, we moved the parent professional out of there.
Okay.
Into a classroom.
Can we get that?
We had a parent professional who. Started or left.
So we're going to need to move somebody in there or what do you think? What's your thoughts?
I don't know.
Okay, all right. So that's the.
That's the first project done.
The answer to that question. Thank you, he should, Brad, all right. So.
Ron.
I'm sorry. That was my, my own, I apologize.
So I received a couple of requests from, you know, some of the families in Chiltsburg. So we just talked about swimming and they are sports related. And there's a lot of interest in girls field hockey. And then also in maybe having a fishing derby team. I'm just getting, you know, just emails and just asking if that's something, maybe that could be a club or, but definitely the girls field hockey. There's a lot of interest in, in a lot of terms in the fall, you know, the girls, they only could take so many on the volleyball team, only so many on the cheer team. So there's that kind of group of athletes.
Girls soccer too.
Across, across country.
Anyway, just thought I'd mention.
Thank you. Send me an email about that and I'll forward that to the athletic director.
Yeah, I don't think any vocational school has.
We're a big school, we can, you know, take as many of the classes as many as we can.
Why not?
Plenty of fields.
Why not? Give it a shot. The fishing derby thing, I don't, I know that's more of a, maybe a club tent situation.
I was going to say, I can't, Stagney does something with fishing and some other things.
There's a sportsman's club. He does have a sportsman's club, yeah, yeah. There was, I believe he's an advisor to the sportsman's club there.
So is that John?
Yes. Anyway, anybody else on that? We good? The, on the new business, I put something in here, we're discussing with several members last couple of months. And someone said, why don't we meet at 7:30? And I said, yeah, you're right. So I would like to request that we move our meeting times up to 7:00 PM, starting in September. Any, anybody have any opposition to this, discussion on this?
I don't oppose it. I don't oppose it, but I think the reason that it was down at 7:30 is because when we have subcommittee meetings, I mean, now you have to keep pushing them back. So I mean, so if, if you're going to have a long budget committee, meaning now it'll have to start at 5:30 and people work, you know, so. And we've got a yonder crowd than we had before where most people didn't work.
I was thinking.
Does it have to be a set time all year? Could it be that our meeting time is 7 o'clock unless there's going to be a long subcommittee meeting ahead of time? Because sometimes subcommittees can be done in an hour, some can't. So if we know, for example, it's budget season, the budget subcommittee needs to meet and they need more time and they can't start at 6, they, you know, like that one month we bump it to 7:30?
You folks have a policy that says the school committee meets monthly at the, on the fourth Tuesday. Fourth Tuesday. Every month at 7:30 PM. So you should have.
You have to read your policy.
Yeah, but, well, you can temporarily change the policy, then see if you like it, then backfill and change it. But I do recommend you have a consistent starting time. Now, some, you know, if you, you know, if, if you, if you end up, one meeting gets delayed until 7:30. I mean, I was, I worked with one committee that had their executive session at 6 before 7 o'clock meeting and they notoriously never get, got out at 7. So the public and the cable TV people were waiting for them to start, but.
Why don't we discuss it at the retreat?
Okay.
Find out, those of us personally have a very flexible work schedule. Not everybody does. So, you know, for example, Brian, I think you're working down in Tamaasen. So if, you know, 7:30 is a stretch for you, and I don't know, I'm completely making this up, but, you know, maybe there are a lot of people that can't get out of work early enough and maybe there are a lot of people that can't.
I was just throwing it out there.
I'm, I'm almost supportive of that.
I mean, I was thinking, and subcommittee at 6, but I mean, it's not, this is just food for thought here. We can talk about it in the summertime and, you know. You know, and go for that. So I don't think we have to take a vote today. I think that we can further discussion.
Seven is fine with me.
Do you want to take, does any, any discussion, should we take, do I have to take a vote on this? Or what should I?
I think it'd be changed.
Taking.
It's going to change, or are you going to wait to change them now?
Well, if you're going to, could I suggest you change it for September with a vote now so that you are giving proper notice? And then if you decide between your retreat and the September meeting that you want to change it permanently, you can make that decision in September.
That's, then that's fine. So I would accept a motion to change the meeting times to 7:00 PM, starting September 27th, with the 7, 7/27 meeting.
Seven, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I opposed. Same unanimous. Okay, so we'll put that in. And starting in September 7:00 PM, if there's a subcommittee, they'll meet at 6 and we'll see how it goes.
Policy subcommittee needs to meet anyway, so.
Thanks, okay, that's what I thought, so we just.
New administrative for new business. I mean, we've got a standard practice, like once the audited financial statements are audited or approved, we put them on the website. Just because we're talking about transparency here, I mean, we started with the budgets. And the same thing with the region, I mean, I think we have a copy of the regional agreement for what the voted on, like that would give you everything. Give you the capital budget, the operating budget, financial statements and ratified, you know, corporations, between the towns.
Anybody else with any?
Oh, I got tomorrow more. I know we talked about, I know we talked about the last meeting. Can we, can we do a seriously, take a look at how we do warrants? I mean, this is more of, I think, something for the new business manager to look at.
Discussion we're going to have with our new business manager.
Yep.
Absolutely, Kent.
Yep.
Absolutely.
And the other takeaway from the last meeting was about making sure the budgets, all meetings are posted under the comments. Like, and then with a link back to the school committee page.
I had the discussion with Karen. Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
We good?
Yep.
Okay, so we, yes, there is obviously a plan to, once things get rolling here, to communicate with Jenna. And she's got some great ideas, folks, and I think they're going to make a great team. So we'll leave that for a future meeting. So moving on, like I said, our next meeting was going to be September 27th now at 7:00 PM. We are going to get together, I gave this date to you about a month ago, on Friday, July 8th. We're going to meet here at 9:00 AM. And we will have a light breakfast and catered lunch, similar to last year. I have a agenda, Tony and I have looked over it, we're going to tweak it a little bit. If anybody really wants something to talk about, Nancy, I'm going to throw that on there. You gave me some ideas. Please let me know, anybody has any ideas, what we want to talk about. And we'll make this a brainstorming session. It is an open meeting, it has to be posted. And last year was awesome. And so that, that's what's happening. I know Cheryl, you have a conflict, not a problem, big deal.
We'll miss you.
And we'll miss you. It's okay, you'll be required to make, no. No, so that's coming up, folks, it's going to be Friday, July 8th, right here, 9:00 AM. And hopefully we will get out in the early afternoon. And we'll have, it'll be a meaningful time. It's something that, that I believe Patty and Nancy thought of last year and I just want to carry on the tradition. And just, it's summer retreat, it's, we have an agenda and it's a chance to talk about things that we're working on and why we're here. So I'll leave it to you. Anybody who has anything, any burning issues, let me know. And we'll, we'll put it, we'll put it to the agenda, add it onto the agenda. Okay, with that in mind, I would like, I would entertain a motion to enter executive session to discuss collective bargaining with non-union personnel and collective bargaining strategies. With STA requires a, may I have a motion, please?
Someone.
Second by Nancy, we'll call vote.
Just, just for the record, we will be returning to public session to continue the meeting and take public votes.
We will, thank you.
Executive session.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. We will return to open session to take a vote of the ratification of the business manager contract and line item transfers as indicated in the agenda. We'll call vote, Pat?
Yes.
Taryn?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Nancy? Kent?
Yes.
Gwen?
Yes.
Chairman Ron? Yes, we are in executive session. Yes, we are in executive session.
Item 12 is a ratification of the business manager contracts. I would entertain a motion that we ratified the contract negotiated by the Budget Subcommittee.
So, motion?
Second, motion by Mrs. Gillis. Second by Mr. O'Donnell. All those in favor? Any discussion? We've already discussed it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One opposed. Did you?
I said aye.
I apologize.
You just assumed.
I didn't assume. No, I'm sorry, I'm looking over here.
Say aye by assumed.
Don't assume anything. Item 13 is the fiscal '23 budget line item transfers. I'll entertain a motion to accept superintendent's recommendation of the fiscal '23 budget line item transfers for the appropriate position.
So, motion?
So, if Mrs. Gillis makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moffitt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One abstain. Abstain. One abstention. So, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, one, one. And the, that's six, one, one. And business manager was seven, one. Perfect. Thank you very much.
And I move to adjourn.
Okay. Motion made by Mrs. Muse to adjourn. Is there a second?
Yep.
Okay. Mrs. Gillis. All those in favor?